It's four, so if you guys are ready, then...
Aren't you going to serve cider?
Yeah.
For the email party?
We had our party at Christmas time, sorry.
Bring the meeting to order. Agenda item number one, approval of summary minutes on January 7, 2014 for the regular meeting.
I'm making a motion with summary minutes.
I'll second it.
On January 7, 2014.
I have one amendment to make. We Lola English instructors have very little opportunity to display our considerable skills, and so this is one place where I would like to exercise that right. On page three of five, in the middle of the page, Roger Madison stated Oxbo Park is a nice area and he believes it will complement the school. No offense, no offense to the note taker. Easily often done, it should be complement, not compliment. Just that one change. And then, I think it's really good. Crystal does a great job.
That slipped by me, though, so...
Oh, all right.
Black mark by my name, because I approve for...
Of course, Bill.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with an approval of middle section on page three of five. All in favor? Any other discussion before? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose. Motion passes. Moving forward to public hearing items number two, presentation of 2013 annual report. City staff, Dean.
Before we get into that, I was just going to inform the commission that Mr. Kirk Cusick has been appointed to serve as the second out-of-city representative on the commission. And he does reside within three miles of the city. And he is appointed by the mayor to fill out that term that was briefly occupied by Matt Wagner. And so with Mr. Cusick's appointment, we would have the full complement of nine. So I did see Mr. Story in the hallway, so I hope he was heading this direction. I figured he was here for the meeting, but he may be joining us here in a second. One of the things that we, I will start with, this is a format where every year, the mayor and the city commission ask, and they have multiple boards and commissions that serve and are appointed by the mayor and city commissioners, and they ask that at the end of each year, those boards and commissions provide a report summarizing their activities and accomplishments and goals and things of that nature. And so this is a format that was developed many years ago and has been utilized in kind of a standardized format by other boards and commissions. And I thought I would start with two things that have been on the goals list for Planning Commission for a number of years. And one of those was the adoption of a property maintenance code. The Planning Commission has had discussions about property maintenance. We've had discussions about demolition by neglect and some other issues, about code enforcement and the appearance of the community. And in April of this year, a new property maintenance code was adopted by the city commission. The other thing that the Planning Commission had expressed interest in was having some kind of joint meeting with the city commission. And in November, if you recall in this room, we had a joint study session where we went over the comprehensive plan in detail for the benefit of both city and planning commissioners in the same audience. So those were two accomplishments that were on your goals list that got addressed in One thing that we do each year, and we will be doing in the first meeting in March, is the Kansas Planning and Zoning Enabling Legislation requires that the Planning Commission conduct an annual review of the Salina Comprehensive Plan. And Mr. Neal with the county is going to be doing the same thing with the Sling County Planning Commission, and we agreed that we would do it in the first meeting in March. So they'll be looking at theirs and ours, and we'll be looking at ours and theirs. And Mr. Neal has been very good about dealing with fringe issues and making sure that there's communication about what's going on and that the county's planning efforts dovetail as much as possible with the cities. As part of that, we'll be going through the implementation matrix, and you can give us any guidance you have about priorities. We've had some discussion about priorities of gateways, and there's basically been a listing that starts with Ninth and I-70 and Crawford and I-135 as the two priority locations for gateway enhancements. You held a number of study sessions last year, and we just do a count that looks at activity or volume of applications. And you considered and made final decisions on 32 different types of applications, including comprehensive plan amendments that were discussed last year. That compares with 44 in 2012. But the thing to note there is that in 2012, we looked at about 16 different school sites for individual zoning changes. And so that is what accounts for that higher number. There were 30 applications heard in 2011 and '21 and 2010. So in terms of actual applications, it's picked up slightly from 2010. One of the things that we did last year that is not something that occurs all the time is we have a comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan has an amendment process. There were several different amendments discussed in 2013. Two that were ultimately adopted were a change in the Yost addition, where Old Dominion is, and that whole area there was changed from commercial to employment on the long-range comprehensive plan. And then in the West Crawford corridor, partially to the way that the original comprehensive plan map was developed, it showed the south side of Crawford there as suburban residential instead of commercial. And as part of the quick shop rezoning, the land use plan was amended to show that as commercial. There was one other one that did not result in a change, but we had multiple meetings, discussion and dialogue, and that was the area there on the south side of West State Street along Cherry Street. That change was not ultimately adopted, but we had some good dialogue and discussion on that. And that's certainly a candidate to come up for discussion when we do our annual review in March. In terms of site plans that you looked at, in terms of commercial site plans, you looked at and reviewed and approved plans for the Starbucks Taco Bell restaurant in front of Central Mall. You reviewed plans to add an outdoor equipment display area there at Waters True Value. And we had the interesting case of the non-climatized storage complex on the abandoned rail right of way, which was a little bit of a first for everyone, trying to develop what was railroad right of way. And then you had some hearings and reviewed the Kansas Wesleyan Sports Facilities application. I think one thing we did want to focus on, because we try to track trends, and that is in 2013, subtracting the Ryan addition, which you reviewed and approved a preliminary plat of, that contained 79 residential lots. Ultimately, the city commission elected not to annex that parcel into the city, so it is still a wheat field that is not part of the city limits. And so that leaves in 2013, basically, we added 14 residential building lots to our And so that is the replat that was done there at Melanie Lane and Schilling Road, where Stan Byquist took part of a C1 zone lot and created 14 lots for either single-family or two-family development. In 2012, we had one new subdivision plat, and that was Pheasant Ridge Edition Number Two that had 27 lots. And then Mr. Byquist, again, in that same area, carved out seven single-family building sites along Eileen Lane. If we go back to 2011, there were no residential subdivision plats filed at all. And in 2010, we had Stone Lake Edition, which did contain a total of 153 lots, none of which have been developed yet. And then we have to go back to 2009, again, no residential subdivision plats. And then we go back to 2008, there were six residential subdivisions. They contained 212 building lots. And I think if we look at this lack of plating activity, it does indicate the market is still absorbing residential lots created in 2008 and prior years. And one of the things I wanted to share was that if you look at plating activity historically with the Planning Commission is, you go back to 1998, there was a big spike with multiple subdivisions being done in that year, and then the follow-up, the next few years, no plats at all. And then in 2002 and 2003, there was another wave of plats. And then the subsequent years, there was no plating activity. Then 2008, we had six residential subdivision plats, and basically, very limited activity since then. So if you were charting the subdivision plating trends in Salina, you would just have this peak, and then nothing, and then a peak, and then nothing. And it's like, we platted a lot of lots, and we absorbed them, and we platted a lot of lots. So you're not going to see this, at least historically, this continuous trend of having multiple residential subdivisions each year. So you also continued your landscape awards this year, and gave out awards to the children's center, which was, received the Golden Leaf Award. We provided information there for you about membership. Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Story were reappointed to three-year terms. Patrick Miccell was an out-of-city representative. He has now been replaced by Mr. Cusick. And we have had no youth representatives appointed to replace Trent Brown and Justin Walker, who served with us last year. Mr. Kennedy is your liaison to the Heritage Commission, and Mr. Ryan is your liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've laid out your attendance there as best we have it and your contact information. And so if you think we don't count very well in terms of your attendance, or if you think that we have misidentified your address or contact information, please bring that to our attention. And we have also attached a copy of the meeting schedule for this year, just so you can record those dates. We've laid out for you on page three and four and five, just some of the goals that have been identified, that we continue to work on. But I think the things that will be coming up most immediately would be the annual review of the comprehensive plan, and then some additional work on Neighborhood Center and Community Center, the content of those districts. And then the other thing that could occur sometime in 2014 would be the next round of new proposed floodplain maps for the city. And that could be happening, say, in September, October this year, where we would have a new set of maps to review and possibly public meetings. So that's kind of a summary of high points of what we addressed last year, and some identified and carryover goals for the upcoming year. But if there are things that you would like to add or questions about attendance, please feel free to bring that to our attention. The idea being that after you've reviewed this, that this is a report that you feel comfortable sending on to the city commission. And so if there's any other items that you would like to see included or communicated, we can certainly add those. But the idea is that this report gets reviewed by you and then submitted to the city commission as a summary of your activities last year.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
You may.
Where does the magic number of three additional zoning districts, overlay districts, come from? Have we had kind of three in the back of our mind someplace?
What we've identified is, in the comprehensive plan, to carry that out and the recommendations they have as far as land use categories. They have commercial, they have employment, they have suburban residential. Those land use classifications, the goals in those are pretty well carried out by existing districts that we have. But if we were to get into implementing the goals, or the stated goals, in the urban residential, Neighborhood Center and Community Center land use categories, we identified a need to create either new zoning districts or overlay districts to carry those out. So that is what the origin of that is. So we've got something like eight or more neighborhood centers that have been identified throughout the community. And as we discussed at our study session and others, if to go to get development that fits the Neighborhood Center or Community Center concept, we would need to amend our zoning districts or create overlay districts to carry that out. And so those were three that were identified that we couldn't really carry out or implement under our current zoning ordinance without those changes.
And I have another question. The opinion in there in the second bullet points about the new residential lots created are an indication of a continued slowdown, did that take into fact, into account the number of new houses and the value of the lots? Or, I mean, that seems kind of broad to me. You could have an oversupply of expensive lots, and you could have not enough low-priced lots.
Yeah, it does not reflect the price points, but what it does reflect, and it's not a function of how many are ultimately approved, but one level of activity is how many new residential subdivisions are filed in a calendar year. And the fact that only one was filed would mean that there is not a, that there's not a great uptick in residential activity, that we're still absorbing the lots that we already have platted today. But it is not a reflection of, I can recall, I think it was right before the spike in 2008, we had something like a dozen vacant residential lots that were not within Mariposa, Cedar Ridge, or River Run, which are all right in the proximity of Cedar Ridge Drive and Marymount Road. So basically, if you looked on paper and said, "We had X number of vacant lots," that doesn't tell you the rest of the story, that the vast majority of those vacant lots were in those three subdivisions, which are at price points that aren't very accessible to a lot of the home buyers in the community. So it's not, it's not just how many, but it's also where, and it's also the price points.
Question on, take Magnolia Hills, for example, on its phase three that it just did with its last, kind of going to the, to the south there. At what point does the city then consider platted lots versus lots, I mean, he may have platted 150 lots out there, I'm just using that as an example. But in phase one, only 27 were available, and then they brought in another 25 and 25. So I guess I'm looking back from reviewing this. If I looked at this 100 years from today, and I was reviewing the notes of what happened in 2014 and 13, it seems to me that the third phase of when Kelly came in in 2013 and put in those remaining lots, that that should be reflected in, that those lots were put into use in 2013, even though they were platted in 2006. Because all the lots may have been platted, but they weren't usable lots at the time. So I would, again, going back and looking at it, it would be very interesting to be able to see that 150 lots were platted, but only 25 were accessible and ready for building permits. And then another 25 were brought in in 2009, and then another 25 brought in in 2014. As you look at this, you wouldn't really know that any of those lots came in in this physical year. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we can update you on that, but I've been tracking those trends since 1988. And what we do in our tracking is we have two categories. One is vacant paper lots, and the other category is vacant lots with services. And so you have to look at both of those to really know what's available. For instance, this afternoon, I had a meeting with some parties about the north half of River Trail. Those lots are all platted. There are, there's probably close to 40 lots in that north half of River Trail. However, not a single one of those lots has any services, so they're paper lots, but they're not buildable. So you have to look at it with two different categories, is vacant lots that are on paper, and then vacant lots that have services. And so you need to look at both of those to, when somebody talks about available residential lots, those lots in River Trail are not really available, because you can't buy one and build a house on it, because they don't have any services. So the numbers that we use in these reports, in terms of how many lots we're plating at any given time, are just how many lots we're creating, but it's not necessarily the same. For instance, Pheasant Ridge Number Two had 27 lots, and all those improvements were put in so that all 27 were buildable. But a lot of the other developments, like Quail Meadows and Magnolia Hills Estates, the improvements are put in in phases. So you might have 130 lots, but they're not all buildable. So we can come back to you with a follow-up report on that, that shows those trends. But what I have found is that the average inventory of paper lots that are platted and vacant is about 400, and that the number that are vacant and buildable has varied from as many as 200 to as few as 50 or 60.
I think that's always been a discrepancy, especially the last several months of us trying to figure out how many lots are there really to build on that are available today for a building permit to be taken out of. I've heard 250, and then I heard, come back later, and somebody say, "Well, gosh, after looking, we found that there's not near to be 250, there's only 70." And so I think it's interesting to know how many, I mean, we actually have, because it has been a big topic over the last six months, I think it'll continue to be one. And quite frankly, I would want to know what the city commission and the city manager and everybody underneath there who are making decisions, what number are we really using? Are we using the 72? Are we making decisions off the 210 with 400 paper lots? Are we making decisions off of, yeah, there's 210 lots, in which 180 of them are price point of $60,000 or higher? It's hard to make decisions for the city based on, if I look at 210, and I know that standard housing is 180 to 210, even those numbers are the same, that, you see what I'm saying, is there's a whole lot going in just to say, "There's 210 available lots in town." I would look at that and go, "Wow, don't need any more lots." But when you break it down from there of reporting that, I think that's just, I would love for somebody to do a study and/or come up with exactly, so that the city commission has it, the planning commission has it, and Jason Gage and the building department all are on the same page of how many are there, how many are in the north end, how many are in the south end, how many are in the east side, how many are above $40,000, how many are below $20,000? And that would be a nice study to be able to have, or, because I know the chamber, I know the city commission, I know us, are all working on affordable housing, workforce housing, and making sure that housing is available for anybody that comes to town. That would be great to have that report. I'm not sure who's going to do it, but that would be nice to have that report.
At least a first pass of that, and that's really more of a discussion for the public improvement financing and special assessment financing. But there was an effort to try to get that number in terms of differentiating between paper lots with no services and lots that are available that one could obtain a building permit today. And we will, we will try to get into that a little deeper, so that we can report that at a deeper level for you. But what we mainly wanted to, this is mostly an activity or application report, and we just wanted to point out that the activity we've had years in 2011 and 2009, when no plats were filed at all, and the last two years, we've basically had one application for a new subdivision each year.
Anybody else have any questions for city staff on anything?
Please review your attendance and your, if you've moved, or we've got a bad address for you or something, just let Crystal know, and we'll try to keep that updated. But the, if there's anything, we've broken this down into kind of long-range goals, which are more tied to the comprehensive plan. Zoning administration goals, which are more our day-to-day, carrying out of the ordinance. And then the bottom part is recommendations that you have for the city commission, that is previous communications that you have had, including having one joint study session a year. The Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission has dealt with storage sheds on residential corner lots. Staff has some additional work to get back with you on that before that goes back to the city commission. And then items there relating to the comprehensive plan about the Smoky Hill River Channel, a master utility plan, and an off-street trails master plan date back to the time that the Planning Commission originally recommended adoption of the plan in 2010. So we keep those on there just as a reminder of what those were intended to communicate. But there's certainly, within those three categories, there's room for additions or subtractions, as commission members see fit.
This is a public hearing. I will open it up for, if any wants to comment on anything they've heard on the 2013 annual report, you can approach if you would like. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. And if anybody has the last-minute questions or remarks over the presentation that Dean gave, please ask now.
Say, Dean, what other conversation or discussions went into the cell phone tariff that was built in Oakdale? We approved that, and then it was sort of bantered around for other reasons. But I see it's going up, where we originally considered it. What else went into that?
The city commission looked at it... The, the city commission looked at it, based on your recommendation, there were some members of the city commission who thought that maybe it was too close, or could, they didn't necessarily agree completely with the finding of planning commission and Parks and Recreation staff, that the proposed location would not impinge upon the expandability of Kenwood Cove. And so, staff was asked to look at an alternate location, and we did. Parks and Recreation, planning staff, others looked at a location that was farther to the east and closer to that storage building, and we found that the clearances and the negative impact on the ability to use and access that storage building were not going to be feasible. And so, we reported that back to the city commission, and they went back to the very original location. And so, where it is being constructed is exactly where and how the, the planning commission recommended it.
Also on Oakdale Park, is there any proposal coming up through Parks and Recreation or any other part of the city about the old swimming pool and the bathhouse on the north side of the by-center?
That is part of the Kenwood Cove, or, or not the Kenwood Cove, but the Kenwood Park discussion. What, what is happening is that the city owns Kenwood Park, and the county leases space there for the fair and their facilities. The county owns Oakdale Park. Currently, we have an action up in District Court that would award clear and title to Oakdale Park to Salina County, over and above all other parties, and defining what they own. And then, the plan is to deed Oakdale Park from the county to the city. Some of the discussions you've been reading in the newspaper about recreation center and things like that, the former swimming pool site is, is wrapped into some of those Many of you may not recall, but I do, that in 1988, the city commission voted on a proposal to construct a new recreation center at the parking lot, the grassy area east of the bicentennial center parking lot. And that ultimately, I think on a three to two vote, did not move forward as a project, and basically, the recreation center is sat on a shelf at that time. But that, that was the proposed location at that time, and there is, there's some, when people are talking about multiple possible locations, that is one that has been thrown out.
I think at the time that was done, I recall, some of the information in the newspapers cited the area over by Church, Church of the Cross, United Methodist Church as the demographic center of Salina. I mean, people, you saw where all the heads were, that would be the midpoint. Where would that be today? Where's the center of town? When I was a kid, Wesleyan was the south end, now it's kind of the north end of town.
It would probably be south of there now. I think Mr. Kennedy could tell you that, as the school district continues to wrestle with keeping balanced enrollment in the central and south districts, that the gravitational pull is, is pulling south. Where Republic was viewed as being kind of the center line, it's not the center line anymore.
There'd be a committee to study the parking lot surfacing requirements, how will that...
That is something I wanted to, to just bring up and mention, what, what has been discussed and, and not carried out yet, but we can do that if, if that is a process that you would like to pursue. But the thought was that we would send out expressions of interest forms to people who expressed interest in that issue, and others have them submit those expression of interest forms that would come back to you to review as a commission, and then you could, from that list, form a committee that would consist of those folks, plus a couple of your commission members, who could meet and study that issue, and then make recommendations back. But is the use of expression of interest forms, to have people express their interest in doing that, is that a workable method for you to create your committee?
Well, if we can get some good applicants, it seems like the expression of interest method is letting some of the committees that the city has down at this point, BZA being pretty thin. And we've had vacant people here. My concern is just that the people that are stakeholders in that get a chance to be on it.
Right, we would certainly make sure that they got one of those in hand, but it would still be up to them to express their interest, fill it out, and say they want to participate.
Along that line, and as part of the conversation, I think we talked about this before, but I, I guess I don't necessarily want to make the question, but I know we talked about the cost of permeable parking being considerably higher than regular parking, am I remembering that correctly, Dean? And yet, looking at some of the runoff issues that are involved here, especially in new construction, it seems to me that ought to be a part of a consideration. I know the city doesn't want to burden builders, but at the same time, maybe look at what's involved with that, what are the pluses and minuses of that, putting in more permeable.
We can certainly gather some information up for that committee. We have quite a bit of information, our engineering department does, and then there, there's other things too, like grass pavers and, and other things that are options for overflow parking and things that haven't always been explored. But there are some, and they've been used. I know in the case of the Kansas State Historical Museum, they have a fire access lane that goes all the way around the building on the north and west sides. That is made out of brick pavers, unless you look closely, you wouldn't know, because there's grass that's growing up between the brick pavers, but underneath there is a concrete brick surface that'd support the weight of a fire truck. So, there are, are things like that, that are, that are, especially in the area of overflow parking, that are things that, that could be done. So, we can certainly include a, a menu of those options as part of that, and make sure that you know, and the development community knows, that those options are out there, and that we're not intending, when we say asphalt or concrete paving, there's a lot of variation within that, that would still meet that intent.
Ken?
I just have a, a comment and a request. One is, I'm delighted to see the continued focus on opportunities for gateways and entryways on the long-range plan. I hope long-range doesn't mean more than four years. It's kind of been one of my goals to see that come back to this commission at some time, and we've talked about it a number of years. So, I hope we get a chance to look at that in the near future rather than long-range future. And then, the request is, I wonder if Crystal could send us, now that this report will be ready for the commission, after the report, could you send us an updated membership roster that shows, without the ones that are leaving, just a current membership roster of our committee? Maybe email that to us. Thank you.
My three things, Dean, just updates since I've been on here, if you can update me on these three things, because I get asked in the community. One would be on the corner of Ninth and Magnolia, unless I was dreaming, didn't we look at a site plan for Murphy Oil at one point in time in front of Lowe's?
That would be Ninth and Schilling.
Sorry, Ninth and Schilling. Buffalo Wild Wings I could ask about on a daily basis, and then, any update on the Coyote Canyon owners slash chicken place that used to be there? Popeyes, thank you. Any, any update on those three things? Will we see those coming, or anything back in front of us?
You may see the Murphy's Oil, because they, if they ever actually, the issue with Murphy's Oil is that they got their cart before their horse, and they came to you to get their site plan approved without having all the approvals of Lowe's and the, the other owners in there who did not approve of their plans. So, basically, although the site plan was approved by the city, the site plan was not approved by, under the REAs for that development. So, there's been enough time lag that basically their approval has lapsed, and if anything came back, it would have to come back to you. But we have heard not a peep from Murphy Oil, they've never submitted a building permit application based on that revised plan, so we would double-check the timeframe, but it may have been long enough that they would have to come back to you in any event. On the Buffalo Wild Wings, Dustin might have a better, he was doing that plan review. As far as I know, we have approved all the building plans that we have received, and that they were very close to being able to obtain a building permit for that and the attached shoe carnival that goes with it. They went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and got a parking variance, that was an important part of their plan, and they've submitted plans for building permit, and as far as I know, the plan review is complete in order to allow a permit to be issued. And then, it is correct that the owners who own the Coyote Canyon property purchased the property that is occupied by the vacant Popeyes Chicken. However, the last discussions I had, they were first attempting to, they currently lease their site from the Central Mall, and their first goal was to purchase that property outright from the owners of Central Mall, and they have the Popeyes location as a backup plan should those negotiations not succeed. So, they've not presented any plans for doing anything on the Popeyes site specifically, but it is tied up with them trying to own instead of lease their current location in front of Central Mall.
Thank you.
We had some exciting times last year rezoning the schools, if I remember right, and, and in that discussion, it was just, it was talked about all the city properties that are sitting in residential areas, are we going to, is that going to come in front of us in the next year?
That'd be up to the city manager, and to a degree, those departments, but we certainly have some fire stations, and some parks, and some other facilities that would certainly fall into that category, that we have created a public use category just for that purpose. The other property that comes to mind is, is the bicentennial and Fairgrounds property, which we created a, a zoning district just to accommodate the, the unique operations that they have over there. So, it is possible that those things would come forward this year.
Make it the last half of next year if we do.
City owns a lot of properties. We have more parks than we do have schools, so.
Any other items for them? Hate to drag it out if we don't have anything else for Dean, nothing else on the agenda than other matters.
Yeah, I did want, and I attached in the food for thought section, I thought, you know, we, we don't have that so much here because we don't, we don't have the growth rings or layers of growth, but it is something that we deal with when we discuss North Salina or some of those things, and particularly in the larger metropolitan areas where you have particularly mall properties and things like that, and I thought this was a very thoughtful article that was in the Kansas City Star, that one thing cities and planning commissions and others don't do very well is plan with the idea that they are planning for eventual obsolescence. Our, our planning horizons are, are kind of short, and we don't have things like Kansas City where they have the Sprint Center, and they have a vacant Kemper Arena that they can't figure out what to do with, or I can actually remember when the Bannister Mall or the Indian Springs Mall were actually functioning malls that had tenants, and now they're, they're sitting there vacant. And so, I'm not even suggesting that that's a good idea, but one of the things they suggested was, you know, it says that Kansas City likes to steady things, this seems like a great subject to pursue. Maybe today's developers, builders, and homebuyers should pay a fee into a special fund to be used to demolish or rebuild old structures. And so, we're currently doing that for parks and some other things, but we don't always, when we're doing reports or reviewing projects or applications, we, we don't much consider the fact of maybe this building or this use is not going to last forever, and then what, what happens then? We have been fortunate that Midstate Plaza didn't become a, an empty tomb when Central Mall was built, that, that both of them seem to be doing okay, but we certainly have our share of vacant, abandoned, or, or obsolete buildings, and, and we spend a lot of time as a staff and a commission trying to figure out what, what to do with those. So, I thought that was a, a good food for thought, and then the other one, just another food for thought item, was the, the concept of the work-at-home villages, and how that relates to how we plan and, and do our subdivisions, and the concept of home-based businesses, and the concept of, of people who don't commute to work but work out of their homes, things of that nature. Those, those trends are changing, so those are two food-for-thought items there. The other thing, it would be an item of interest, on Thursday at 4:00, the Downtown Design Review Board will meet in this room to consider an application to demolish and remove the former Phoenix Hotel Building in its entirety. And so, there, there will be a public hearing on that, but primarily to review what happens to the property in the interim after the, the property is removed, and to what it's going to look like, when, and how it's going to be kept, what condition it'll be kept, until there is a decision about redeveloping the property. At least part of that will make way for some additional parking for assurance partners. Two other items, the building permit for the CVS Pharmacy at Ohio and Crawford has been issued, both the demolition and the construction, and probably tomorrow morning, the building permit for the Quick Shop on West Crawford will be issued. The demolition has occurred, but there have been some things we've been working through with them before they can begin construction.
Dean, can I interrupt just a minute on that CVS? I notice as I drive there, they have on the south side of that lot, they have the erosion barrier, and then the fence, both of which sit right on the sidewalk. And I've noticed a number of pedestrians who, walking west on Crawford Street, end up walking in the street from left, right...
Are you saying the fence goes over where... Are you saying the fence goes over where, it overlaps where the?
There's probably six inches from the curb before the fence starts.
Okay. So, they, they should probably.
And I, I understand they needed to remove the concrete and so forth.
Right. But that's not, that's not their property line. So, they, they should keep the fence, um, on their own property. So, we, we can have engineering go out and look at that. Cause that, that would be in the right of way.
Anything else?
I have one, one other matter, just one or two that will require an action. Um, on January the seventh, you conducted a public hearing on request by Montessori School for a conditional use permit, um, to construct a new preschool on McAdams. After the hearing, I had conversations with, um, some of the resident owners who own town homes in the Pepper Tree Estates Development. There's four of them. We determined that the county's property tax and property ownership records show the only owner there to be the Pepper Tree Estates Homeowners Association with a, uh, out-of-date address. And so, what we would like you to do, um, you know, it'd be helpful if it was Mr. Norland since he made a, the original motion, but we've discussed this with Roger Madison, with the Montessori Board, and I have talked to those owners. We would like you to, uh, adopt a motion to reconsider your January seven action on conditional use permit application CU thirteen dash four and set a new public hearing date for February fourth, two thousand and fourteen, to allow the resident owners of the town homes and Pepper Tree Estates to receive notice and have an opportunity to be heard. Basically, they didn't have an opportunity to attend the hearing and be heard because the notice went to a non, a nonexistent homeowners association. And we have, um, gotten with the county appraiser, um, but we determine that that's something we'll have to look at in all those situations like Florida Soul and Manchester Manor, and in this case, Pepper Tree Estates, where individuals own a town home and the association owns the remaining grounds. For some reason, now the, the county mappers show the owners as, um, an association even though there are individuals who hold deeds and are record owners of town homes there. So, we're going to have to do a second look for that. But if Mr. Morland could make a motion, or Norland could make a motion to reconsider your January seven action and set a new hearing date for February fourth, we will bring that back with those owners having an opportunity to appear before you and speak.
Uh, Dean, just a quick question. When, if we reconsider that, can we skip through all the, the coverage of that and specifically just ask if there's public comment for that when it comes up?
Yes. You will get a written report, but we, you.
Yeah.
We will simply say you have your report. We will ask you if you have any further questions. And then, you can ask the public if they have any comment.
Yeah.
We will have some other items on that agenda, but this one will be first.
I would.
It was my understanding, I thought that, um, he owned all of, or at least the duplex next door to where it was going. Is, are you saying there were two duplexes inside that? And now, it's the one that's two over from it? Is that correct?
What we have is there is, there is the original, and we, we will provide a map in your packet, the original Pepper Tree Estates. There were four town homes that actually got built and the rest of it didn't. Those town homes are thirteen hundred, thirteen oh two McAdams and thirteen oh one, thirteen oh three Meyer Drive. The, each of those town homes is owned by an individual. They have deeds to them, they are record owners. But if you go to the county mapping and the property tax records, they show the record owner to be Pepper Tree Estates Homeowners Association. So, we sent a notice letter to the homeowners association and the four individuals who own the town home units at those locations did not receive notice of the hearing.
Would that be common practice on any zoning change within, if somebody's notified within one or two hundred, you don't send it to the address, you send it to the address where the property taxes go then?
Yes. So, if you are a tenant and you live in a duplex, but the owner of that duplex lives on the other side of town, we're gonna send the notice to the owner of the duplex, not to the residents who live there.
But in this case, the residents who live there are the owners?
Yes.
But isn't it correct that Roger Madison owned the one directly to the west of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, since the county didn't have the correct address, where's the tax statement been sent? And if they've been paying taxes?
I, I had to have, I had to have a special interview with the county appraiser to determine that, that for some reason, the county mappers who mapped the tax parcels were unable to provide that information.
But my question is, where was the tax statements being sent? Did you ask that?
To thirteen hundred McAdams, thirteen oh two McAdams, thirteen oh one Meyer Drive and thirteen oh three Meyer Drive.
But yeah, you weren't provided those addresses for the?
That is, that is correct.
Wow.
So, what it means is that when we have a case like that, that is in proximity to Florida Soul or Manchester Manor or Twin Oaks Town Homes, that rather than just relying on the property tax records, we'll have to do that extra step and, and find those owners. And in this case, I went down to the Register of Deeds office and found the deeds for all those properties. And then, the county appraiser confirmed that for me.
Are these four, uh, owners, are they, are they, do they have concerns or do they have written concerns or, or they're just?
They have, they have expressed concerns to me about the application and expressed concerns about their, they didn't get an opportunity to express their opinions at the hearing.
Watch them not show up. That'd be the, we'll have another hearing.
Well, they will have, they will have their.
I don't think we have any, any reason to not jump through the hoop other than it's an inconvenience.
Yeah.
Right. They, they.
I think this is a no-brainer, guys. It's getting close to.
Yeah. And with that in mind, I would, uh, move that we reconsider applications CU thirteen dash four for later consideration.
And we would set that hearing for February fourth.
Hang on a minute. Just a first one second.
So, we have a motion to reconsider your January seventh action on conditional use permit application CU thirteen dash four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that will be added to your February fourth agenda. All of them on February fourth, we will have the Soggy Dog Salon and we will have a application from Cobb Valley Greenhouses.
Okay. I don't want us to extend the session very long, much longer. I know we all are eager to get out of here, but I did want to make a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I think we ought to have the Abner Purney Be Here Now Award for near-perfect attendance, by which we all bail in comparison. So, my compliments to Commissioner Purney on that.
That could be a typo.
That's what they said. I don't know.
Could be. I mean, it's what the, it's what the record says, so I go by the record.
It's bad, Kell gave one of mine.
But, uh, and then, uh, Dean, I wanted to express my appreciation to you about including the food for thought items. I thought that they were indeed good food for thought. You know, what happens when you have commercial developments or otherwise housing that sits vacant? What does the city do with that? I thought that was also a well-written article, so I sort of liked that. They still have popcorn and they have parking at the malls, they could meet about that.
You like my next one, cause it's gonna be on urban farming.
Okay. That's good. But then, the other thing, uh, is about the, uh, the idea of villages and, you know, the smaller developments. When I look at that, and I speak to my fellow commissioners too, when we think about decaying infrastructure, we're seeing several places where we're having to replace, uh, plumbing and piping and sewer and so forth in town. Uh, and the idea, again, continued infill development, if there were some way to look at creating that kind of a, a village in, in a redevelopment atmosphere closer to town, I, I like the idea of that. Obviously, that's dependent on a lot of commercial, uh, enterprises taking, taking an interest. And in the resilience group just Monday, we had a discussion about marrying or bringing together profit motive with this idealistic idea of rebuilding infill. I don't have any magic, uh, bullet information about it, but the article, as well as the discussion, I think is something that ought to continue both here and with the City Commission. And I would welcome sessions if, if something like that would develop where the City Commission and the planning commissions, even perhaps the county commission could have some sort of open forum about how we might encourage that kind of development. I'd welcome that. So, it's just my editorial for the day.
Anything else? If not, this means adjourned.
...from a political donor. The couple is facing fourteen federal felony counts. NPR's Craig Wyndham reports McDonald's.